Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Clarence City Council's regular meeting. My name is Doug Chipman, I'm the Mayor of Clarence and I'm happy to welcome you all here tonight. Could I ask you to stand and join me at the council prayer? Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. Could I also acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight and pay our respects to elders past and present? Thank you. Just remind everyone, we are again live streaming this meeting via YouTube and the full copy of the agenda is available on council's website. And with that, we'll open the meeting. And I note that we have an apology from the Deputy Mayor, Alderman Chong. I'd now like to deal with the start items and give everyone an opportunity to comment on those before we deal with them with one omnibus motion. So first of all, confirmation of minutes for the 2nd of November and the special council meeting held on the 16th of November has circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Are there any comments on those previous minutes? Thank you. Item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on the 9th and 16th of November and the agenda brief on the 20th of November. Thank you. I note that there are no petitions from the General Manager. Are there any petitions from the floor? Moving on to item 10, reports from outside bodies. The copying refused to supply due authority. I note that September portly report's still pending. Alderman Walk, do you have any comment to make?
Yes, we're within 72 hours of the AGM, so we'll get you plenty of paperwork subsequent.
Thank you very much. Moving through to the Tasmanian Water Corporation. Meeting was held on the 4th of November and I'd like to table the annual report and also the portly report to the 30th of September. Greater Hobart Committee, the formal communique from the 12th of October meeting. I'll table that as well as the mayor forum which met on the 17th of November. The action sheet, ma'am.
As to questions, Mr. Mayor, on the action sheet, does that actually record the the meetings and the subject matter that was discussed?
Certainly does, Alderman James.
Could you just, in a few words, if you so, just to give us a sort of outline if that's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, just on the key factors that the action plan entitles?
Yeah, very briefly, we dealt with the submission from the four mayors to the PESRAC committee. We talked about the Hobart City Council local procurement policy that they announced. Talked about the state budget and how well the Greater Hobart Council's fed in that. And we talked about our relationship with the state government and with that, I note that we have a workshop coming up on the 30th of November.
So, quick question, Mr. Mayor. Can you go on the record to confirm Tas Water is trading while solvent?
Oh, I can confirm it. Tas Water is trading solvent.
Yes.
Any other questions? Moving on then to reports from council and special committees and other representing bodies. Are there any reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table the Marine Community and Arts Centre minutes for November. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a report, but I'd just like to remind all of the aldermen that they are invited to the Clarence City Band Awards on the 6th of December. There will be the awards and a concert, so we'd love to see as many aldermen as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Muller?
I have two, Mr. Mayor, both right to the Harrow Community Centre. The first being the annual general meeting, that was, sorry, an ordinary meeting that was held. And I'll table those minutes in a moment, along with the annual general meeting, which was delayed, of course, due to the Covid, but it was held. There's a couple of points to be made from the president's report. And the first one relates to, it's not actually in the report, but he was very pleased with the fact that council has finally appointed a full-time manager assistant for the Harrow Community Centre, given the size of operations and the number of things that it performed. The president was particularly pleased that he wasn't down there every single week dealing with some management issue, that now he had a general manager who was doing the job. And that same general manager, of course, has also taken over responsibilities for the Alma Centre. So, that being said, the report is noteworthy, once again, in the fact that it takes a lot of, it contains the various groups that are on the media committee and reports from those various sections, so tennis balls, mentorship, et cetera, are all interesting and written in their own right. The issue that came up in the president's report was that the year had some challenges and particularly related to Covid-19, which meant that financially, like most organisations, they took a hit having to close down, along the operations. But there are two points of note which the general manager, which the president raises, and that is the ability of the committee to exercise equitable, fair and equitable governance. So, it seems to be missing. The two issues were raised, the committee has, throughout recent months, been billed with extraordinary bounce from council that no trying to get the front foot is very difficult. The last two examples relate to five years of VAT paid dating from council claiming DST that were not paid by the centre council staff. Now, that's understandable, but Harrow got away for so long. Of course, there's a bit of a mystery and it comes as a shock. The second shock came in recent weeks when the committee agreed naively to pay all wages and salaries for delighted council staff to find that a member who was maintained on council's payroll, billed to the centre, who was not able to be redeployed and therefore granted a three-month paid holiday at home. But then, that three months taken pushed the employee ahead in holidays overdue, being directed and encouraged to take cash payment from council billed to the centre with no communication, doubling the salary bill for that period for the centre. It just seems to me that, you know, that we probably need to spend a bit more time communicating those sorts of things with the centre if the centre is, if going to their whole centre account for the management of that facility. So, apart from that, it's all going well and the centre and the activities thereof have bounced back well after Covid. So, I table the reports and minutes as you please.
Thank you. Other reports? And item 11.1, with the information in the weekly briefing reports for the 2nd, 9th and 16th of November noted. Any questions on those weekly briefing reports? Okay, so I'll ask for a motion that the Office of Regimentation be adopted in case of all those. Thanks, Alderman Pierce, thanks, Alderman Kendy. All those in favour? Carry unanimously, thank you. Okay, well, we'll need to continue the meeting. I've just been briefed that the live streaming has failed. What's the expected delay on that?
If I could just have one minute to re-go to it and if not, just get down and work on it.
All right, look, we'll pause for that one minute. I think the public have got a genuine interest in the proceedings, so we'll give that opportunity.
Sure.
Okay, I'll talk to everyone back. I'm going to create the, we have a technical glitch and dropped off line there, but I'm sure that we're back on line again now. Next item on the agenda is item three, which is make communication. I was about to table on this to the significant meetings that myself and Deputy Mayor all over the last three weeks since the last meeting. Item six is public question, Tom. Item 7.1, 10.2, there's no action. 7.3, answers to previous questions taken on those. A question from Mr. Marsh, Acting General Manager. Is the answer above or do you want to read that?
7.3 or 7.4.
7.3.
Mr. Mayor, the response to the question is as recorded in the agenda.
Thank you, we'll take that as read and move to 7.4. There's a question for that notice from Mr. Chris Boron.
Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Boron's question here. Mr. Boron's question is, a senior inspector at Tas Police has recommended by council again for time to increase safety at the wet work gravel car park. Tas Police has agreed to increase presence at the park. Essentially, they have increased their heating circuit by moving strategically placed rocks. See photo attached, there's been a photo circulated, Alderman on their desk. That is the photo that Mr. Boron has attached to his question. Reloading the rocks and perhaps adding more would increase safety to those using the playground car park and reduce the heating circuit. It's not rocket science and a no-brainer. Another indigenous flag flying fiasco. Who is accountable for public safety at Clarence City Council? I believe you have a response, Graham?
Through Mr. Mayor. Our response has been prepared in relation to this item. We are, council agrees to move through.
And moving on to item eight, deputations by members of the public. I understand that there are four. Acting General Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four deputations. Three relate to a planning matter, planning item 2020 dash or slash 012606, 84 East Durham Highway. I will read each individually. The first deputation is from Jeff and Annabelle Carl. They say, this development fails clause 10.4.2 setback building P3. It protrudes beyond the building envelope. The south boundary setback is less than 1.5 metres. The mass and visual impact of units two and three will dominate the existing house, unit 1-84, comma 28A Loweta Road, number 3, 28A, 82 East Durham Highway, number 82, and 80A, East Durham Highways, number 80A, public open space and impacts the amenity of all these dwellings, particularly that of unit 3, 28A. Number 84's flattish land profile results in units two, three being unable to use the contours to lower its building height. A single-storey development is preferred. It's out of character for homes in our immediate area on the east side of East Durham Highway, which are single dwellings with larger setbacks. It's too large a development on too small a block. Number 82 is currently shadowed on its kitchen-dining window and over its current public open space by unit 1, 84. Note, the planned DA, number 2020-012846, in the rear of number 82, in brackets, for the 14th of December 2020 council's agenda, its north wall window and public open space will be overshadowed by all three of number 84's units. Number 80A's only effective public open space north of our garage car lot and will lose 80 to 85% of its winter solar access if 84's development is approved. Note, autumn will revise on 22nd of November 20. Our public open space is not that designated in the council's agenda, pages 20 and 29. The visual impact slash bulk of the side-south wall, when looking north from 80A, is in its own shadow and silhouetted from mid-March to, excuse me, to mid-October. The stated wall texture detail will not assist. It will still be a solid wall up to six metres high. An unscreened 60-centimetre glass balustrade on unit three will directly overlook our public open space. Despite traffic reports, experience of number 84's driveway and even with a new six-metre apron, we have serious issues with ingress egress, line of sight along the highway's rising bend, the nearby cut-through and that area's real accident history. That's number one. Number two is from Stephen and Diana Forsyth. They say, it is highly inappropriate to site two-story buildings at the rear of blocks in areas of gently sloping land, here average 3.5 degrees, except where they are separated from existing upslope dwellings by a large distance. The proposed two-story units two and three are conjoined, 17.35 metres broad and extend across 92% of the shared boundary with 328A Loweta Road. We are not aware of any other conjoined units above East Durham Highway within the surrounding square kilometre. The new units extend outside of the rear and side building envelopes and side setback. They overshadow the public open space of 80A East Durham Highway. They fail to comply with 10.4.2A3 or meet P3. Using the 2008 LiDAR survey square kilometre tile, since which has, since which there has been only a 3% increase in dwellings, landslope and building height analysis shows 13% of dwellings are as high as the proposed units, but most of these are allocated island areas that are of much greater slope, have no other buildings behind them, rear inter-building separation is at least 100% greater or a road separates buildings. The overwhelming majority of 700 buildings in this part of Lindisfarne remain single dwellings on the original blocks and except for within multi-building developments, the building separation is significantly more than with this proposal. The units form a massive visual bulk which contrasts greatly to the present panoramic vista of Mount Wellington to Mount Direction and Durham River, which will be entirely obliterated. They greatly affect the amenity of 328A Loweta Road unit and garden. Traffic accidents on East Durham Highway over the last 15 years show almost a tenfold increase between the crossing breaks of the median strip compared to the highway average and this is where cars will be de-accelerating to enter the proposed development. Number three is from Emma Forsyth, owner of 328A Loweta Road. I am deeply concerned about the number of extensive two-story dwellings being proposed for the neighbourhood and the detrimental impact they are having, they have, on the existing properties and streetscape. The proposed development is completely out of context with the surrounding neighbourhood due to its vast scale, in brackets, height 6.8 metres, width 17.53 metres, extending 92% along my boundary fence, close bracket. Its dominating visual bulk and its inability to blend in with the neighbourhood landscape. It will dramatically and unreasonably impact the amenity of my unit. The council officers' report suggests that the design would employ several materials, textures and elements to lessen visual bulk. However, the fact remains the building still protrudes outside the building envelope and does not comply with requirements of the building to be set in at 1.5 metres to the side fences. It is crammed on the block. The report also states that the proposed development would not be unreasonable and is consistent with the mass and scale of residential buildings in this surrounding area and refers to 87 and 89 East Durham Highway being two-story conjoined buildings. However, there are no dwellings situated directly behind 87 and 89 as there is with the proposed development 84 East Durham Highway. Refer to images in my planning objection showcasing the extent of obstruction to the view and dominating impact it has on my unit. No other conjoined two-story units have been built in the general area above East Durham Highway as well the new units at 7 Valory Road are all one-story. The report also states that the site for the proposed unit sits topographically lower than 28A Loweta Road and mentions a slight slope to the site being approximately seven degrees. However, it is only 3.7 degrees between my unit and the conjoined units. The slope is not significant enough to reduce the height impact. The fourth deputation I have received is from Mrs. Joanne Marsh of 32A King Street, Belried. Mrs. Marsh's deputation relates to a code of conduct matter that has been previously dealt with and dismissed. Bringing this matter into the public record is improper and not considered to afford the alderman natural justice. Mrs. Marsh's deputation does not meet the deputation policy requirements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on then to, there's no motions on notice or determinations of petitions. So, I now like to advise that we're sitting as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. And the first item there is 11.3.1, a development application 84 East Durham Highway, three multiple dwellings. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has circulated, the motion, an alternative motion to what's been listed in the agenda is that the development application for three multiple dwellings, one existing and two new at 84 East Durham Highway, be refused for the following reason.
So, before you go into it, do I have a second, please? I'm sorry, I haven't.
Yes, I'll see.
Alderman Muller, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to draw council's attention to item two, where it refers to public open space, when in fact it should be private open space.
Just let us find that. So, this is A2, is it?
A2, it says the proposed development cast shadowing to their private, public. It should be private open space, please.
Well, I've actually got overshadowing the private open space on my.
Just the next one now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, it should be private.
The heading is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the heading is correct. It's just that the wording under the heading is public. It should be private.
Is everyone copied that?
Yep, if you do, yes.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, please, Alderman.
Mr. Mayor, the matter in relation to clause 10.4.2P1, a citing and scale loss of amenity, in relation to dot point one, there will be a reduction of sunlight to the habitable room windows at 82 East Durham Highway. In the officer's report on page 20, it quote, "The property at 82 East Durham Highway would be the most impacted by the proposed development." The basic fact is that this particular overshadowing will cause unreasonable loss of amenity from the reduction sunlight to a habitable room windows to that property at 82 East Durham Highway. Secondly, the overshadowing of the private open space of the dwelling at 28A Loweta Road, proposed development would cast shadowing to their private open space and would unreasonably impact upon the amenity on the adjoining property. In the visual impacts caused by the apparent scale, bulk and proportion of dwellings when viewed from 28A Loweta Road, there is overshadowing of the private open space in relation to the dwelling at 80 East Durham Highway. And also, the fact is that in the actual officer's report, the officer's report incorrectly identifies an area of 24 square metres as private open space. This area consists of a concrete drive and a small grass area used for vehicle turning, which is overlooked by three other dwellings. In fact, the large, the private open space that is directly impacted upon the property at 80A East Durham Highway is that area of land that is adjacent to number 84 East Durham Highway and does impact upon that in relation to overshadowing outside those or the winter solars. This is a large development, as was mentioned by one of the representatives. It does not satisfy performance criteria in relation to 10.4.2. As the bulk, scale and size of it in a horizontal direction, without any basic visual impact between those buildings, it will create a sidelink and also a particular impact on the amenity of the area. I seek council support.
Thank you. Before proceeding, could I just seek clarification? You said the officer's report is wrong. If I heard you correctly there, Alderman James? Could I seek clarification on that? I think this is a pivotal factor in our determination and we need to deal with the facts in pursuing this. Well, I'd miss an effort, Alderman James, if you said that the report is wrong.
The reference, Mr. Mayor, is in fact that the officer's report identifies the 24 square metres as the private open space. Where in fact, the private open space is in fact the area adjacent to 84, which is the large area adjacent to the building and which shares a common boundary with the 84 East Durham Highway. So, the private open space is in fact not the turning area at the 24 square metres. It's the large area which is adjacent to the boundary at 84 East Durham Highway.
Alderman?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not quite sure how plain that was, but I think the officer's report indicates that the private open space is where the driveway is, where in fact the private open space is the lawn area which is directly next to 84, next to the development. So, I think that's where the point of difference becomes. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to just focus on the bulk and scale of this particular building and the officer's report, which indicates that the building elevations that face the adjoining lots contain several design elements to articulate the building form and avoid blank expanses which would exacerbate the bulk and mass. I would like to argue that bulk and mass is bulk and mass. It doesn't really matter whether there's textures or not. The side of a bus is still the side of a bus in terms of the outlook, which is the context in which bulk and scale is to be taken. As it says in the case of the Hobart City Council, Kason versus HCC and others, which discussed the matter of visual impact, regard was given to an outlook from a habitable window in its entirety, but not to the protection of any particular view such as one to the mountain. Well, we've heard from the deputation that this particular, and from the deputation and from the alternative motion, that this is a single-story unit that's being impacted here by a proposal to build two co-joined double-story units on what basically is the same level of ground. So, from ground level to the, so from a seated position, you're basically looking at a 45-degree angle to the sky for 85% of your shared boundary. So, that's a pretty reasonable amount of bulk and scale. And I think that is the issue that is particularly, for me anyway, particularly alarming about this particular property, that you're going to do, put this sort of a unit. We've had similar cases, I think, in Wellington Road, which didn't come before council. Of course, the developer withdrew it when the officers, quite rightly, recommended refusal for much the same reasons, that double-story plonked in front of a house.
Point of origin, Mr. Mayor, it actually did come before council and the officers did recommend refusal and the alderman actually had an alternative motion which changed that.
Thanks, Alderman James. Alderman Muller, you?
If that is correct, I stand corrected, but it's not the way that I remember it.
Thank you.
But in the event anyway, it was recommended for refusal because it was a very similar situation in that, you know, you were blocking both of the horizontal and the vertical aspect of this massive bulk and scale being put on there. And then, so that's my particular point of point on this. And I encourage Alderman James's alternative to be supported.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alderman Newick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I just want to highlight to my fellow alderman the fact that pretty much every time that we have voted against a planning development like this, we've actually we've actually had that overturned when it's gone to the tribunal. Now, people have a right to object and they have a right to say they don't like it. But, you know, the cost to the community that we are potentially, you know, putting forward here is something that we need to consider. And we all know that there's a few other things happening out there that are going to add up. And I think we need to be aware of that and I certainly won't be supporting this motion. And that's one of my concerns is that, you know, people have to jump through a lot of hoops. And the mechanism that we use to determine whether people can do certain things in our community is the planning scheme. Now, people go through the whole process to deal with what the planning scheme says and comply with those conditions and deal with what I know is a pretty complex process. You know, for us to then turn around and then say, oh no, we don't like it and to knock it back, I think we're playing with fire if we continue to do that. You know, but the bottom line is people want to live in these sorts of areas, whether it be Bellre, with high density living, whether it be Lindisbrough and those sorts of areas. And to be honest, we have an obligation to facilitate that in an orderly fashion, in a way that allows people to live in a place that is popular, that has all the amenities that people want, whether it be shopping, access to beaches, parks or those sort of things. And if we don't do it through something like a planning scheme, well, how else are we going to do it? You know, to just turn around and say, no, I don't like that one, you know, I certainly don't see how we can do that. I mean, I'll give you an example. I had a previous household, I was in, I had a house next door to me, go to two stories and the house was only about one point five meters away from the boundary and I thought, well, hang on, you know, I'd be fair not that to happen, it's going to take out a bit of my light. I didn't appeal because I didn't think it was the right thing to do. And then when it happened, it was nowhere near as bad as I thought it might have been. And I mean, bottom line is, I, you know, and I'd like to think that, you know, a lot of people fear these things as taking out all their light and all of their view. But, you know, when it all happens, I don't think it's normally as bad as what people assume it's going to happen. The other thing is too, look, I mean, we have a responsibility to allow, you know, to create the economic activity in our community, to create the jobs and to keep things ticking out. And if we start, you know, knocking back things like this, I think, you know, we're going down a very slippery slope. And I mean, you know, I'll foreshadow, you know, putting forward the margin, if this one's lost, to approve, you know, this development, which I think is a sensible development, use of what is a rather large block. The reality is, no matter what we put on there, some people would have probably appealed it or put in a representation against it, which is their right. But I think, you know, this is a sensible development that's complied with the majority of the planning scheme. They've dealt with the issues and I think we should be supporting people to get on with this sort of stuff in our community and allow them to develop what are underdeveloped areas and allow them to live in places where they want to live. So I encourage them to knock this one back and support, you know, the original officer's recommendation.
Alderman Kent?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be supporting Alderman James' alternative motion. This development application will impact us as outlined in the reasons for the alternative motion. And we have an obligation to those people as well. Now, I appreciate the fact that the application was withdrawn by the applicant to allow the time to redesign the proposal to satisfy a greater number of standards, but it's not there yet. I urge my fellow Alderman to support this alternative motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kent. Our respect, Alderman Von.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I don't need to remind colleagues aside, we sit as a planning authority and we base our decisions, as sitting in as planning authority, on the best available professional advice. The move of the motion made assertion, Mr Mayor, earlier this evening, that the report was not correct. I don't believe that was clarified, or certainly wasn't to my satisfaction. Like many colleagues here, I've met with the proponents of those against, the opponents and the proponents of this development. I can see the points of view that have been put here tonight. But we sit as a planning authority and Alderman James is up in remarks and I won't seek to create debate on it, but my clear recollection was, the assertion was made that the officer's report was wrong, was misleading, or something on those lines. So I'd like a sense of comfort. I think we all deserve that. Because if there is something wrong here that we're relying upon tonight, you're going to make sure that as a planning authority, make a report. So if through you, Mr Mayor, if I may ask, Mr Lovell, the manager of city planning, is he aware of any area of this report that is incorrect or wrong?
Mr Lovell?
Through you, Mr Mayor. No, I don't believe there's any errors in the report. Perhaps there's some confusion about the area we were talking about in the report. We identified an area of complying, twenty-five square meters, which is actually part of a larger area that's actually around ninety square meters. And overall, it was over seven hundred square meters of open area on the site. So there may be some confusion about the area we're talking about, but certainly we're satisfied that the area that we referred to as being a compliant area of open space was indeed satisfied by the standards of the scheme and in fact was part of a much larger area.
Alderman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Then I'd ask then through you, Mr Mayor, to Alderman James, that maybe you might like to address his assertion, his closing remarks.
Other speakers? Alderman Pierce and then Alderman Warren.
Second, Mayor. As other officers said, we've got a planning scheme and that's what we look at. And the planning scheme is fine. And when I read this report, I thought, oh yes, straightforward, you know, it looks fairly straightforward until I went there, of course. But then when I went there, it did change my mind somewhat. I do give the applicant credit for some redesigning. But bulk and scale of the unit at twenty-eight A Lowater Road is horrendous. And I always look when I go to these things, would I like that where I live? And the answer is no. No way. Now, the fact is, there seems to be some confusion over public open space and whatever, but there is an area next to the driveway there. And when I drove up, the people there said, look, you'll have to go on the grass when you reverse round. I've got certificates in defense of events driving. I thought, geez, no way, no. But they were a hundred percent correct. I had to go on that grass area to reverse. There's no way you could do it otherwise. So I think there may be some confusion. There aren't two lots of land there. But that land there is certainly not public open space. You need as part of the driveway to reverse here. There's no risk on that. So the bulk and scale of this, it really doesn't, you know, to me, it is, I know the applicant's done their best, but to me, it is really that large and it will really impact on the unit at twenty-eight more than anything, I think. And look, I really feel sorry, this comes in the state of town, I really do feel sorry for for those people at twenty-eight, the unit three, the unit right up, which a lot of Alderman women saw. So, Mayor, look, it's one of those things that I don't like supporting the refusal motion, but I must because I went there and to me, the bulk and scale is just too great.
Thank you, Alderman Warren.
That's a nice substitute for saying zero-nine for situation. I stood in the living room of eighty-two Lowater Road and I can't imagine having a six-point-three meter concrete wall just the other side of the fence from that living room. I mean, it's got, bulk and scale is a criteria of the planning scheme. We're talking about the planning scheme. It does not meet that criteria. There's something in the report about adding detail to lessen the impact. Well, that's just, quite frankly, putting lipstick on a pig and not going to lessen the impact of a huge concrete wall just the other side of the fence from the living area of unit three. I thank Alderman Pierce for clarifying. What I was going to say is that on page twenty-nine of the report, the officers have identified that the site has a compliant private open space of twenty-four meters directly in front of the house. This is the area that Alderman Pierce was talking about, that he needed to use to reverse his car. The owners are, or have been talking about concrete in that area. It would make part of the drying plate. But aside from that, at the moment, it's a pocket handkerchief-sized square of grass. It's overlooked by three dwellings. How is that private? That is, I mean, there are actually worse overlooking there than there are in the bit that we're talking about being overshadowed. And if you look at the overshadowing of that beautiful grass area with a well-established mature garden that's used by the owners and their grandchildren, it's going to be overshadowed for eighty percent, eighty percent of the overshadowed during the day, which does not meet the planning scheme. So again, if you're going by the planning scheme, then we cannot approve this. The rest of the open space that Mr Lovell referred to is concreted and paved. There's no alternate grass area other than that small area that is overlooked by three houses and used for vehicles to reverse. So I will be supporting this motion because I don't believe that it meets the planning scheme in terms of bulk and scale and overshadowing private space. And I think the deputations were particularly useful tonight and also the correspondence that we have had from the respondents. And I do thank them for the time and trouble that they've gone to. I apologize that some of my colleagues were not paying attention during those deputations. And I hope that they have not come to this meeting with a closed mind and that they are in fact listening to the debate.
Thank you, Alderman Warren. Other speakers? Roger Poy, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In summary, may I say that on page nineteen, it states amongst other things that compliance with zone and codes, the proposal meets the scheme's relevant acceptable solutions for residential zone, et cetera, and store water with the exception of the following. And there is exceptions to the following. And the performance criteria have to be addressed in relation to this. And it's already been mentioned that the property at eighty-two East Derwent Highway and is referred to in the officer's report, that it is going to cause overshadowing and unreasonable loss of amenity to that particular dwelling. Also, in the officer's report, in that particular performance criteria under ten point four point two P one, it refers to the private open space of the dwelling at twenty-eight A Lowater Road. And the proposed development will cast shadowing on that private open space and will unreasonably impact upon the amenity of the adjoining property. Thirdly, in accordance with the compliance with zone and codes and in accordance with the bulk, scale and visual impacts, it is saying that in this particular performance criteria, the bulk, scale and size of this horizontal building, which is of no in view length break within that particular structure, will cause unnecessary loss of amenity to the adjoining properties at Lowater Road and also at eighty A East Derwent Highway. I seek council's support.
Thank you. So the motion for the chair is for refusal. All those in favor? Against the motion is carried. Moving on to eleven point three point two, to development application of fifty-three Balook Street, Lord Adal, for an addition to dwelling. Thanks, Alderman Newington. Second, Alderman Pierce. Alderman Newington?
No, I just think the, you know, this is a situation where someone's trying to take full advantage of the land that they own. And I think that they, you know, increase their living area inside their house. And I think the way that they've done it by keeping it on a single level and combining with the existing, you know, the issues that were put forward by the representatives in relation to, you know, there's certainly no scale and bulk issues here by building up on those sort of things. I think it's a very sensitive way to approach, a way of increasing their living space in their house, which is consistent with other houses in the area. And I encourage my colleagues to support this development.
Thank you. Alderman Pierce?
Yes, same, Mr. Alderman Newington. I think this is really sensible and deserves support, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Other speakers? No need for a rider reply? Do you want to speak? I'll put the motion in for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favor? Carried unanimously, eleven point three point three.
So I believe the officer's recommendation, Mr.
Is a development application at one Alia Drive and sixty Alia Drive and twenty-four Petra Drive, Briston Vale, moved by Alderman Mulder. Seconded by Alderman Von. Alderman?
Mr Mayor, here we go. A much-needed ninety-eight lot subdivision in an area of affordable private homes from a developer with a great track record. My only regret is that this was originally designed for an even greater need, namely an old, aged residence facility. And it is a great pity that the federal government and our so-called national leaders didn't have the foresight to see that this is an infinitely better use for this particular area. And I know we struggled for a long time to do that, but no, no, it wasn't happening because they weren't going to get a license. And despite the fact that subsequent units, when they've actually been built and had a license, reached maximum potential in a very short space of time. But that's not what we're here to discuss. We're now here to discuss turning this into affordable housing. A ninety-eight lot subdivision, which is at a seven and affordable housing area. There are two things that I think are going back into history a little bit. Is that this subdivision and all the subdivisions in this area known as Olive Grove are only possible because the developer, in the old days of headworks charges, I think spent somewhere in the region of one plus million dollars in order to get an extra water line from the Flagstaff Reserve to service this particular lot and contributed to the upgrade of the Riston Vale sewerage plant, sewerage treatment facilities. And these are all so that benefit to the wider community. And now we have a ninety-eight lot subdivision. My only issue with this one is like similar divisions, there are linear parks provided, which is a really great design work because it provides access away from the roads for children to play and to navigate and to move. But the area lacks a play park and it's outside council's policy in regards to localized play parks. And the nature of linear parks means that one can't be provided there. But I believe that there have been discussions between staff and the intention is to actually purchase one of the lots, a suitable lot in this subdivision at government valuation. And I would think that, and to convert that into a park. So apart from that absence in the design plan, but I'm quite sure that the developers will once again go that extra mile for the good of the community and that this is a very, very commendable development.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a great outcome. Housing demand, as we all know, continues to grow in our great city. And here we see ninety-eight lots coming online and in an area that is under enormous demand. It's fantastic to see. It's a sensible staged approach. We know that there's a total of four hundred and twenty-six lots of existing approved subdivisions around the particular area in question. This is a great outcome. And it's a stone's throw from where we're, we're called the stone's throw, but it's close to where I live, the neighboring suburb or suburb over. And I know that every day that there is growing demand in this part of our city. So this is a fantastic outcome.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, it is pleasing to see subdivisions of this scale coming before us and ones that have really had a lot of legwork put into it, not just a degree of sort of hope and prayers. This has been judicious and a long time coming. I would express again, not with the same turn of phrase as Alderman Mulder you worship around the fact that there was to be somewhat of an aged care facility there that isn't happening. A lot of people in Riston Vale have been holding out for that to occur before selling. That's not going to happen, but I mean, there is potentially more activity not far away in Clarence Lifestyle Village. So again, aging in place is, I guess, hopefully can be catered for there. There's four senior land. This is close to services. This is good for the existing commercial center within Riston Vale as well as the surrounding areas. It's not at the exurbs. It really is, you know, right within sort of where it should be carried. So some of that is deviated a little bit from the hard and fast of planning. But on hard and fast of planning, as per the officer's report, I would urge everyone to support it.
Other speakers? Do you need a rider reply, Alderman? Okay, the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions of advice. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And that concludes our business as a planning authority. Next item on the agenda, eleven point five point one, concerns a dog park, proposed dog park that in Cambridge. So the recommendation is that we approve the draft master. So the recommendation is that we approve the draft master plan for community consultation. Alderman Walker, seconded Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm chuffed to see that the concept of the state of the art dog park is progressing as we're going along. There's still a bit of a way to go, but I think most of the design work has been well and truly advanced. I think some thank yous are in order, certainly to my fellow Aldermen who so enthusiastically endorse the novice emotional table of January nineteen. And I'd also like to pay thanks to the officers that have done all the hard work getting to where we are today. The side question is if you like a brownfield side, it's not a case of displacing one music group to cater for the needs of another. And that is excellent design and is to be commended, as is the work. And I won't highlight a whole lot of people, but I think we should make mention of the hard work that Sally Union has got, the detail of the design. We're now going out to feedback, and I think there's two great things about feedback. One is it's a chance to give to the community about some elements that they think could be incorporated or that might have been missed out. But it also provides the opportunity for some, if you like, interpretation and explanation around the rationale of certain elements within the park. As we go through that, there might be questions as to why is something missing or is there a better way and the detailed reasoning can be sort of brought out through that. I guess there's, I think, we really should take notice of that, that this isn't just a state-of-the-art concept. When completed, this will be head and shoulders, but the best facility in the state, a demonstration site, and a site that I think will be greatly appreciated. And in fact, Mr. Toohey, can you give me an update on roughly how many dog registrations we have in Clarence at the moment? Give or take a few hundred?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's ten thousand nine hundred and seventy.
Well, let's round it up to, let's round it up to eleven thousand.
Let's give them the focus and pride with that.
Well, I think that there's something in that too. But again, canines are greatly appreciated members of many Clarence households. And again, as far as activity groups go, they, there is a registration fee to pay, and this is part of the way to give back. I think it's important to note that this isn't the be-all and end-all on all things dogs. We are still going to go through a dog management act, and there's always a raft of elements to that. So that also includes how we best enable rational usage in other areas, and that may need some infrastructure upgrades to South Street or perhaps some other areas, not on the scale of this. This is a standalone state-of-the-art facility that is well underway, so I strongly and hardly seek support from around the table. Your worship.
Thank you. Alderman Kennedy?
Nothing really to add from me, Mr. Mayor. I'm thrilled to see this moving ahead now. There's a thousand dogs registered, it is almost in this city, and this will make a lot of people very happy. And I think it will make us in the city very proud of what this dog park is going to be like. So yeah, thrilled to see it for us now, moving ahead, and I'd like to also thank the officers that put so much love into this.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Newington?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, great initiative to see this happening. I think, you know, the pressures that we're seeing in a lot of our high-use areas at the moment and the conflict between some of the times with dogs and dog users and small kids and things like that, I think, you know, if we're going to even look at, you know, mending our current regulations on dogs and on leads and where they can go and they can't go, we simply couldn't make any real changes to that unless we started providing these sorts of dedicated areas where people can take their dogs for an off-leash activity session. We all know how important dogs are to many people in the community, and I certainly think this will go a long way to actually helping us to come up with a better plan in the long term, where we can try and, you know, we're always going to have conflicts between walkers and riders on paths and dog users and non-dog users everywhere, but the only way we're going to get there is by looking at some of these larger user groups and trying to find ways to provide specific facilities for them. And I encourage everyone to support this one, and hopefully moving forward, we look at other dedicated dog areas as well in the future. So I think this is a great move in the right direction.
Thank you. Other speakers? Roger Poyet?
No, thank you.
So the motion is that we approve the draft master plan and for community consultation. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Eleven point five point two, Alma Street Activity Centre. The recommendation that we approve additional storage and reallocate one hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars before going to tender.
I'd like to move that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second there, Alderman Blomme? Thank you. Alderman Bonberto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this recommendation fits very nicely into the Alma's strategic plan, the current strategic plan, which is looking to incorporate the whole of the community into the use of the Alma Street facility. In past times, it's been known as the seniors' citizens' facility. However, that is not the case now. We're looking towards all of the community being able to use this facility in one way, shape or form. So when the Clarence District Junior Football Club approached council in terms of storage, this actually fits very well with the strategic plan in terms of the use of the facility. It also means that that particular club can then use the facility in other ways, perhaps to have an event of some sort, to have meetings. It actually uses the facility in a holistic way. Storage-wise, we are lacking storage across the city, and therefore, this storage will be used regardless of whether or not the football club in the future finds other storage facilities. It also means that the radio station will be able to use storage facilities in the revised plan. I look forward to the development application coming to us as soon as possible so that we can start the renovations. We have the funds, and we've been looking at this for a very long time. So I urge all Aldermen to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Alderman Blomme?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, there's a great deal I can add to those very staged words from Alderman Bonberto. I mean, this is, to sum it up, a win-win situation for the community. It is a smart use of our asset. In fact, by making this investment, we increase the value of our community asset whilst at the same time ensuring that community-based clubs, particularly junior sporting club, is able to utilize this asset. This is an absolute no-brainer. It's a smart use of an asset. It will assist the growth of Clarence Junior Footy Club, and it is, from my perspective, Mr. Mayor, a win-win situation for the residents and homeowners of this great city.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Yes, I have two questions through you to Mr. Lovell, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, in part B of the officer's recommendation, it refers to reallocation of funds from the...
So Mr. Graham, Mr. Lovell? Did I say Mr. Lovell?
I was waiting to see what the question was before I clarified down on Blomme.
It's my apologies because I shouldn't hate to, Mr. Graham.
I could see Mr. Lovell was looking quite startled.
My apologies, Mr. Lovell, but then again, thank you. So the reallocation of funds from the capital budget from the Harrow Community Centre to Alma Street. Can you just clarify for me what those funds were being proposed, what particular project is...
Through Mr. Lovell, through to the Mr. Mayor. The Harrow Rec Centre, council adopted the Harrow Rec Centre in two lots of funding. The first one was for master planning work, which the council, which the committee has advised they would like to go and hold. And the second, which is the one which is in the recommendation, is for, three hundred thousand dollars was for construction and DDA works. That was completely dependent upon the outcome of the master plan. There was actually no specific project aligned for that. Council officers highly recommend that the master plan work is continued and completed, and then I can come back to council in terms of what's recommended for stage one of any redevelopment for the Harrow Rec Centre.
My second question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, I've been approached, and I know a number of my colleagues around this table have been approached, in relation to the availability of the centre for their, for normal functions that occur from a year-to-year basis. Can you just advise the council as to the availability of the centre when it would be available for those sort of annual events that are conducted through private organisations as part of the availability and use of the centre, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I will have to take that one on notice because I have to understand through what the current booking system is. I'm not directly involved in that myself, and I'll take that one notice and advise Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alderman Newington and Alderman Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, first of all, I certainly am going to support this motion to go down this path. This is something that's been going on for quite a while now in relation to the obvious DDA compliance issues at the Alma's centre, and I think we certainly need to bring it up to standard. But at the same time, I think, you know, I wanted to put it on record that, you know, longer term, I think we do need to look at, you know, the sort of infrastructure that we provide with community facilities and looking at, you know, which is the best way to go in relation to, you know, continually upgrading older stuff or to be looking at, you know, dedicated spaces or facilities that will cater for, you know, whether it be, you know, the aging population in relation to access and those sort of things, or providing a space for the community, the whole community events. And I certainly think, hopefully in the longer term, when we start looking at the City Heart Project, we have an opportunity to look at something that might be a little bit, you know, better than what we're actually putting forward at the moment. I mean, if we have to rely on putting storage spaces in for the footy club to justify going down this path, which I know is not necessarily the case, but I don't think longer term that's really going to be a solution for them either. I think something that's closer to the actual grounds that they use would be more appropriate. But in the short term, I do believe that we do need to find something that allows them to store their equipment and their, the things that they use in footy clubs these days. So I'm certainly supportive of that. But I think longer term, you know, I mean, as Alderman Blomme mentioned, it does add value to the facility. And longer term, if we decide there might be a more appropriate use for this facility and the opportunity to look at another type of facility that better caters for our community needs, I certainly think we need to keep our eyes open to the possibility of going down that path in the future as well. But certainly in the short term, fully supportive of going down this path. But, you know, and it'll be interesting to see how that all goes. Although I have one concern, only thirty-two thousand dollars to set up a temporary radio station, I'd be questioning that as something that, is that really appropriate for council to be spending that sort of money to provide, to move them for a short term? And, you know, I'm not going to let it get in the way of letting this go forward, but I think in future, I think, you know, I'd question whether that's really appropriate to be included. We've got plenty of other ways of getting information out there in the community these days and whether continuing to support radio stations to the extent I've got concerns. But other than that, happy to support the recommendation and the motion at hand.
Thank you, Alderman Walker?
Look, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This matter does give me a degree of discomfort. I don't for a minute discount that there is a storage challenge facing the football club that is substantial. But this sort of reeks of fundamental pragmatism. As someone that worked in the Royal Hospital prior to the upgrades, the whole facility was a legacy of fundamental pragmatism. Just got this bit of pressure here, so we're just going to change those rooms around there. We're just going to leave that bit. And on and on the spending went for a novel outcome. And I think when Alma's was purchased many moments ago, the idea that its purpose would be a storage facility was probably not in front of mind. I accept there's a challenge and this has been put forward as a solution. I guess one of, you know, one of the things that you ask is how did we get there? Well, the facility that is co-located on Clarence High is less than a decade old. It's avant-garde, and that's something I thought at the time. I did, I did wonder about its layout so much to the point that I saw and got comfort through the offices to the end users that this facility was going to satisfy their needs and that they thought it was the good way to go forward, not just being wowed by a avant-garde design. And yet, we find ourselves with a storage challenge. So that's the conundrum I face, a basic conundrum that there is a need, and this has been put forward as a way to address that. The long-term utilization of the building, it doesn't, doesn't seem to make sense. It seems to be dealing with an immediate challenge at possibly discounting future utility and optimization. So it is a simple matter for me.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Ross?
Mr. Mayor, just to the officer's report, suitable locations for providing additional storage are Clarence High School Over Facility, which is the football clubs aren't ground, Alma Street Activity Centre Facility. There is no available storage base at the Clarence High School Over Facility. Neither is there at Alma's at the moment. And the, any extension to the building is likely to be more expensive than provision of storage at the Alma Street Activity Centre, and the Alma Street location has a workable solution and is relatively affordable. Mr. Mayor, the logical place for this is at the Clarence High School Facility. So that you turn up on game day, you go into the room or for the training sessions, you go into the storage room, and you trot out there, and you, and after the game's over, you put the stuff back in the storage room. And this is, this is just so, this is just, you know, I know it's what they ask, you know, that it's what they ask for, but I mean, when you're in the begging situation, you've got to give whatever's given to you. And I think this money would be much better spending. Even the move of the motion talks about, you know, that a more suitable location can be found in the future. Well, here we are sending good money after bad. So, you know, I'm not going to stand in the way of this facility, but I can indicate that, that, I see the numbers are around the table for it, but I really do have difficulty voting for something, for a short-term temporary fix like this that costs us money, and we're going to have to spend that money that we're not spending now at some time down the track anyway. So, you know, I really think that the Alma Street Activity Centre, that is, you know, it's going to become a storage depot, you know, if this keeps going on. So I really am of the view that, that by all means, go ahead, do the Alma Street works. If you happen without any money, with any additional money to find some temporary storage space for the football club, to give you time to get your ducks in the loa and to talk to the education department and others as required, then by all means. But really, this is the wrong location for this particular facility.
Thank you. Other speaker, Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I never understood this storage was just sold with the football club. I mean, any, any, any group that uses that facility is always looking for storage, so storage will not go astray. But no work in the report has said it's exclusive to the football club. So in that sense, I think if you're adding storage to this, I think it's a bonus. But again, a bit like Alderman Newington, maybe at some stage, and I'm talking about years' time, that maybe we should be looking at a new facility completely, but that's well and truly down the track. So I certainly support additional storage because many groups that will use this will certainly be after storage.
Thank you. Alderman Edmonds?
Thanks very much. Yeah, share some of the, or share, share some of the concerns raised by some of our colleagues tonight about if you needed to build a storage facility for a sporting club, you wouldn't necessarily put it on at Alma's. However, you know, understanding the need and where the request comes from, and also some of the points made by Alderman Peers and others. Thought Alderman Walker's comments about fundamental pragmatism could almost, could be stretched across the entire city. It's often remarked to us about, you know, what's the plan as this city sort of grew. I guess the thing is, like in other times with this council... I guess the thing is, like in other times with this council, we can move dollars around to support needs, you know, the budget is a roll of feast. Line items aren't for particular suburbs or whatever. So as I think we did pretty recently when we were discussing around South Farm, money can be transferred across different topics, sorry, different issues when the need arises. The needs arose here, arose here. It isn't just for the football club and will have long-term benefit for the centre, but I still think we need to keep an eye on our strategic sort of plans and this stuff going forward.
Yeah. Right reply? Put the motion in as recommended, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to governance, 11.7.1, that we receive the quarterly report to review for September. The movement sector, Alderman Peers, thank you. Alderman James, thank you. Alderman Peers, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I'll be sure, I've marked a couple of things, but I've got the answers for any questions I hear, so I'm happy to support the recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. One is on page 18 of the, the quarterly report, and my question through you to, I believe it's Mr Graham, on page 18, the public destination electric vehicle charging station, given that this is, this report is to the 30th of September, and we're now obviously in December, or just about, if Mr Graham advised of the use, if he has the numbers of, and, and what encouragement is being given to those, well, lucky owners of electric vehicles as far as usage of the electric vehicle charging station at the rear of this property?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I don't have the numbers directly on me, but we did follow through with the briefing approximately a month ago in terms of the update on the numbers and the dollars. I can follow through with the current numbers and advise council.
My second question, thank you, Mr Graham. Second question is relates on page 31, and my question through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Lovell, whose capacity is manager of city planning. The boulevard site, it says, and I quote, "A development application was received and is being considered." Mr Lovell, please provide us an update in relation to the boulevard, boulevard site at Kangaroo Bay, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor, an application was submitted and it's on further information. I don't have the details, but I can provide counsel, considering if required.
Thank you. Any other speakers in regard, Alderman Walker?
Finished Alderman James again. I'll just briefly touch on something that Alderman James raised on page 18 in relation to the electric vehicle charging station. I see we're still using the terminology free. This seems to imply that the gifts of electron are being bestowed on us to pass on, and in fact, the more accurate term I would have thought is ratepayer funded. Is there a reason why we're not describing it as ratepayer funded at this stage?
Acting General Manager, would you like to answer that or perhaps Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It might be a terminology in terms of it's effectively a free of charge to the people who actually connect to the charger, and this can be decided by council in the next budget in terms it will be charged. But I will refer to our CFO in terms of whether the terminology should be renamed.
Through you, Mr Mayor, thank you. Mr Graham, I'll put my CFO hat on and not my acting general manager hat on. Mr Alderman Walker, I think that's a good point that you raise, and it's interesting to have that point made and seeking clarification. As we are aware, those particular items weren't specifically costed in the annual estimates for 2021. The quantum of what that would look like would have been difficult to determine at that time, so that wasn't included in the estimates. And I think there was agreement that we would seek that information for the first 12 months with the view to actually including it in our fees and charges and recovering that. So yes, it is free, and in essence, I do believe the funding for the charger was some grant funding, so there was no impost on the, on the rate payers for the implementation and the creation of that station. But in terms of the electrons that could be construed as being not funded by the rate payers.
Not funded by rate payers?
They haven't actually, we haven't actually recovered those fees through rates. It hasn't been included in the estimates.
But it's been paid by someone?
It's been paid through, yes, council costs.
So council funded might be another.
Thank you. That's more than a good question.
I think you do raise a good point, and I think as we go through the budget cycle coming up, that we need to make sure we affect that correctly in the fees and charges. Excellent.
Well, thank you. And one more item before I do, quarterly reports have been part of the staple since I've been on this council. I believe council was one of the first to initiate this. It is a great tool for transparency. I realise there are obviously extra work on our staff for producing this document, but it is a useful thing for both the community and councillors alike. So I think that should go on record because not all councils are doing, and then I think you'll find that most of the ones that are followed on from us. That said, one of the things that I believe I'm reading for the first time, I don't remember a memo or a briefing on it, but one of the things I thought I read for the first time in this documentation, as far as official council stuff goes, is on page nine, and that's notice of a Clarence Services Online Forum, a private Facebook group for health and community services to assist the system basically connect with each other. This, this concerns me, and I know that one answer I'll get back potentially will be the cure-all answer for everything, which is that under the local government act, under our functions and powers, it's to provide for the health, safety and welfare of the community, to represent and promote the interest of the community, to provide for peace order and a good government of the municipal area. But that is as expansive as you want to make it. That is so expansive that we could be chartering on the Egypt or a Patriate Clarence Residence. It is a terminology that gets frequently, I think, interpreted in ways that are suboptimal, to say the least. So coming back to the Clarence Services Online Forum, what is the, why are we in this space? What is the, especially in light of the things like the primary health Tasmania, which is their core business, and what is the, the health, literacy and understanding and if you like, professional backgrounds of Clarence offices that make us best placed to be in a space that I really wasn't aware that we were actively in?
Can we take that notice on notice and provide a briefing to Alderman on that particular programme? Mr Tewey? Thank you.
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes, I'll take that on notice.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the quarterly report in that case? I put the motion that we received, all those in favour? Carry you unanimously. Thank you. There were no financial management items on the agenda, but the CFO, the acting general manager in her capacity as CFO has a table to mark.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to table the Clarence City Council audit and financial statements for the year 1 July 2019 to the 30th of June 2020, and also the associated independent audit report from the Tasmanian Audit Office.
Thank you. Moving on to 11.7.2, the annual plan, recommendation is that we adopt the annual plan. Alderman Moller, thank you. Alderman Edmonds. Alderman Moller?
For Mr Mayor, I won't go over the great length, I'm aware of some discussions around some fine tuning and tinkering, so I'll simply commend the amount of effort that goes into these sorts of things, particularly the fact that, you know, here we are approaching Christmas and the annual plan is actually, you know, nearly half done, nearly half implemented, but it takes a lot of effort and particularly this year. So I'd like to just make my comments in regard to that and then leave my discussions to the summary up.
Thank you. Alderman Edmonds. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I refer to page 19 of the annual plan, and my question through you to the CFO is in relation to the chart at the base of page 19, then it refers to the number of permanent employees, 237, and casuals, 102, for the financial year in 2020. And 2021 refers to, okay, there has been a drop in the numbers. My question through you to CFO is that why has there been a trend to reduce the number of casuals? And I thought that our sort of policy or direction is to encourage, you know, these sort of young people to sort of participate on a probationary basis as part of the casual system and then to obviously assist them as they progress through the employment chain or through their probationary periods. So can you basically, if not provide an answer to your due course, as to why has been a decrease in the number of casuals in the estimates for 2021, please?
Through you, Mr Mayor, thank you for the question, Alderman James. I will have to take that question on notice. I do note that on page 19, it does indicate on the, above the table, that it's the average staff numbers during the estimate periods. But I will take your question on notice and seek information from the manager of human resources.
Thank you very much. And my final question in relation to this is in fact on appendix C on page 54. The headings as listed refer to these projects, capital works, the estimates 1920 are listed, then the actuals including commitments, and then the 1920 funds not yet spent. And there's a total on page 56 of something like 25.4 million that have been approved in the estimates for 1920, but funds have not yet been spent. So perhaps some clarification on that? And does that mean or imply that all those projects that we may have signaled for approval in the 2021 budget will not obviously be finalized or spent, the monies thereof, until such time as those outstanding projects that were approved in the 1920 budget have been expended?
All right, Mr Graham, are you in a position to help us out there?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Not sure I actually understand the question. But of the, we are proceeding to complete 1920 and 2021 projects. A high majority of the 1920 projects have been completed. You'll notice on the deferred project numbers that it's $13 million, which are effectively virtually on hold at the moment. So there's a significant number of dollars there which are projects on hold, for example, like the Seven Mile Beach Complex or Sport Precinct project. But we are still, in terms of, are we going to complete all the 2021 projects this financial year? No, we will not be completing them all this financial year. I believe council understood in terms of adopting the, I think, the highest capital works programme ever councils adopted, that some of those will proceed through 21, 22 in terms of implementation and completion.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Yurington?
Yeah, no, just a quick one, Mr Mayor. Look, I am looking through the annual plan, looking at how we've grouped some of the expenditure items together, you know, I find it confusing as an argument where you've got different things like passive recreation, and then some things are listed under active recreation, there's other things in capital programme that I'd include in passive recreation. And it just, I think we do a lot of, you know, certainly from becoming, I've put my sport and recreation advisory committee hat on, you know, so the community can look at one spot and say, okay, what are we doing in playgrounds? What are we doing in sports grounds? What are we doing in, you know, tracks and trials? What are we doing in those sort of areas? I think would be a really useful way to present that information moving forward to the community. And from my perspective, in relation to knowing what's going on and what's in line and what's coming and what potentially we could look at next, I would find that very useful as well. Now, I know that might not necessarily need to be in the annual plan, but I think consideration of a better way of grouping all this stuff so it's clear and easy to get where we're at in all these spaces would be, would be a useful exercise.
Okay.
Now, just, do you want to make one other point, Mr?
Sorry?
Can I just make one other?
Where's the show?
And look, the thing that stands out to me, and I think it's an issue that's been raised within the sport recreation committee as well, which is, you know, the delay in some of these projects that's happening there, I think that we do seriously need to look at staffing capacity in relation to be able to deliver some of those things. And I know we've got an item coming up in the future in relation to that. But I think, you know, some of the things we've got in line with the extra funding that we've received, we're going to struggle to get all these things happening without looking at that issue. And I think it's something as a council we need to address to deliver specifically in that sport and active passive recreation space and master planning and all those sorts of things. So I think we certainly need to look at that. Thank you.
Do you wish to speak about the format of the annual report?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Alderman for actually, for reading the annual plan. It does take a considerable amount of work. And I'd like to respond to you, Alderman Yurington, in terms of the format. This is a format that we've been following for many, many years now, and it's something that is well and truly due for a makeover. And this is actually something that we'll be working towards for the next eight to 12 months with various groups within the organisation to refresh it. And I really welcome your feedback in terms of how this information is being provided and how important it is to ensure that the community is understanding where council's allocating its funds. So thank you for taking the time to read it, and we'll take on your feedback in our work to refresh the annual plan next year. So thank you.
Other speakers? Alderman Moller, right reply? Thank you. So the recommendation is we adopt the annual plan, all those in favour? Carry unanimously. Item 11.7.3 is that council adopts a mobile food business in public places policy for a 12-month trial. Alderman Yurington, second, Alderman Kendy, Alderman Yurington.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm very pleased to see this finally come before us. You know, something that I've mentioned before to my colleagues and maybe in other meetings where I look at the, some of the active recreation and passive recreation infrastructure we have around the community. I mean, the coastal trail is a classic example of that, where we've got a wonderful walking trial, and in the whole time that we've had it there, we haven't had one business set up to actually take advantage of the people that are using that trial, to add amenity to their experience. And I think this, this food van policy will help with that a lot. Certainly when you look at the bike park, you know, the fact that we didn't have toilets up until just recently was a major problem, we resolved that one. But also now having the opportunity for people to have up, to be able to get a snack, have something to eat, you know, is really important. You know, I mean, regardless of which way you look at it, you know, people are social beings, they like to interact, they like to people watch, they like to have something to eat, they like to have a coffee. And if we can actually improve the amenity of the community by adding these sorts of food vans, you know, not only in the areas that have been identified, but other areas down the track, I think we're going to go a long way to actually encouraging more people to be out and about, you know, using our recreational spaces. You know, I mean, I think a couple of weeks ago, on the Wednesday night, two weeks ago, it was about 30 odd degrees after six or seven o'clock at night, I saw more people on Bellewake Beach than I've ever seen in my life, and just as many people on the coastal trail walking behind Howr and Bellewake Beach and down at, you know, the park. So I think there's certainly enough people out there using these areas now to justify us looking at how to improve their amenity. And I think the other side of it too, which is really important, is the fact that, you know, we're actually increasing, you know, economic activity in our community. We're giving entrepreneurial, you know, hospitality vendors the opportunity to show us what they can do. You know, there's the aspect of, you know, giving some of the newer residents in the community a chance to show off their wares and some of the other foods and the other cultures that are in our community, you know, not just in, what do you call them? Markets on the, on the western shore, we've got a chance locally for people to actually come and We've got a chance locally for people to actually come and show what they can do. And that increased interaction and social connection between the community that's going to happen because of these food vans is a huge part of the benefit of the recreational spaces that we have. So I think, you know, I think this would be a fantastic, you know, opportunity. You know, I mean, some people, you know, we do have to consider, you know, possible, you know, being fair to the existing businesses that are paying rates and taxes, and I think we need to take that into account. And I think we've done that, you know, through the plan, through the plan that we've got in place for this. But I think this would be a fantastic improvement to, you know, the opportunities for everyone in our city. And I really would hope that down the track, I'd love to see us actually, you know, see the success that we get through having the food vans around the community and actually look at that, of creating, you know, regular Super Sundays where we have a whole group of people come over and ride and walk through the community along the coastal trail, and get to come on the eastern shore and appreciate the things that really attract us to the area. You know, we're all singing our praises of Clarence, and I think this will give us a chance to look at some of the ways we can use some of these spaces in a, you know, a better way to get that community interaction and social connections between the vendors, the community, community groups that are going to be able to pop up and use some of these spaces as well, and tell us what they're up to, whether it be land care groups or sporting clubs. But I really think this would be a fantastic, you know, initiative for us to support, you know, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy.
Alderman Eadman doesn't often leave much for anyone else to say, really, but I have been supportive of this, and yes, I'm keen to see food vans out in our community. But I'd just like to point out, part of the recommendation point B, the consultation that will take place following the trial period. This is going to be a really sort of hectic time, I think, for our staff to actually work out how this does actually all roll out, what the uptake's going to be. I did ask some questions about the number of food vans we actually have currently in the city, so I think we just need to be mindful of that. It's just not going to be turned on a switch and it's going to happen. It's going to take quite a bit of work, so I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Just a very quick question, Mayor. Look, I know we're going to have a twelve-monthly trial, but this is for twelve-month basis of this policy, but can we have, will we get updated in our authority report and the other cases to be fit for food van licenses, just to keep it all out straight?
I think it's reasonable to have an update in the quarterly report.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Thanks, Alderman Piers. Other speakers? Alderman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just two things that, well, three really. One is that I note that the policy, although it's not actually spelled out there, that the sites have been chosen and as, and as discussed at the briefing session on Friday, there is a distance away from any existing food provider, so we're not, we're just not unfair competition in that area. In terms of the bike park, I'm not sure whether, Alderman Eadman may not be aware, but there was some discussion, I think it was on Friday, that we licensed this area of land from the state government, and apparently the license conditions may not allow for that site to be there. So just a word of warning about how great it will be to get on the mountain bike park, run over the hills, and then have to actually go another hundred or two meters for coffee, so that may not be the thing. The only other one is, and I'll pinch Alderman Edmonds, it's under here, is I'm wondering why the Kangaroo Bay Hotel site isn't, is on there. It's a great piece of land, and we were promised it would be made available to public uses, and there it is, right in the heart of the city heart.
If I could correct the record, it was actually me who infamately warn against putting food vans.
Any other speakers on this? Alderman Walker?
I want to thank the staff for putting this together, and current policies isn't always that straightforward. Food van revolution was something based, the big dog around about two thousand and eight post the GFC, prior to that in Los Angeles area, the taco trucks that go to the construction area suddenly found that as a whole lot of building stuff finished up, they had to go and look for new markets, and that's largely where it had been one of the most interesting food van markets anywhere in the world. One of the things with food vans is they should be de-risking good ideas and good concepts. You have a van, and if you start out with, I don't know, maybe triple D S N S Ls and then off selling, it's not hard to reconfigure it into something else. So you see many cases, I think Mr. Bergen might even be one of them, where products that eventually, or originate from a food truck can find their way to actually stand alone restaurants. That's, that's some prospective benefits. I have some concerns with where we've ended up here, and this is why I'm sort of vacillating a little bit. I have some concerns around the cost of entry in as much as, I think these will be highly lucrative and profitable in debt, which is a great thing, but when there's only limitations around supply, we see some pressure and disharmony potentially occurring. I don't know if that has been robustly sort of anticipated and mitigated against. And that sort of ties in with the four-hour move-on thing, and how that's going to start and stop, and how it's going to operate, and which vans are going to be involved. So I don't have total comfort around that. I also have some concerns about product selection, because my interpretation, and I've been very happy to be corrected if it's wrong, is that it's almost an expression of interest, they're not all going to be taco trucks, they're not all going to be burger trucks, there's going to be a case of sort of product on, you know, it might be bagels, might be something else, I'm putting this in, so there's already a available deal in the area, we don't necessarily want another one. I worry about other things around whether, you know, some products will be sort of seen as less desirable than others and won't get a bid here. I have some concerns location-wise also around Belle Reve Beach, and I know it's been talked about, well, that's actually, that even on that street is further away from the two other providers, if you like, on Durham Street, but I don't know that I'll see it that way. So robustly, I think food truck policies are important, and if this doesn't get up, I think that just a bit more reconsideration could bring it forward, give us a more comfort on those areas.
Thank you. Other speakers? Robert Ripley, Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, thank you, Alderman Walker. I mean, some of those issues you raised there are legitimate concerns. I mean, my concern is not that we've got too many places picked out, I think, you know, in relation to, like, I mean, if you had a coffee van, like, some of these places that were picked out, like, I mean, first question I'm going to ask is, if we want to amend, like, the limits in some of these one, in certain areas or whatever, what's the process for us to choose? Does it have to go back to a full council meeting, or we can amend this, just as a matter of council policy? Do you have to come back to council?
Mr. Jones has got the character.
Mrs. Doubleye, are you able to answer that question, Tanya?
Mrs. Doubleye, are you able to, what flexibility is there to change and learn as the policy unfolds? Is it flexible enough to do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the reason we split it into a policy and procedure is the policy only campaigns the high level overview, so if we want to add locations, add number of food vans, we can actually do that quite quickly and respond quite well to demand.
So, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we can do that without going back to full council? That's good. Because, yeah, like I said, I mean, if someone's coffee van, someone might have a bagel van or a donut van, so I think to save one food van in some of those locations, I think would be not the outcome that we'd be looking at there, so I think that would be great. And I also agree that Kangaroo Bay near the playground, there would certainly be another location that I would add, add to this mix straight away, to be honest. But anyway, I think it's a great first step. You know, the only way we can learn to see whether it's going to be, you know, accepted by the community and taken up by the entrepreneurs out there that have the food vans, is to actually have a policy in place in the beginning and put it out there and see how it all works. And I think, you know, we'll wait and see what happens, but I certainly think from the feedback I've had that the community are well and truly waiting for this to happen, and I think that I encourage my fellow Alderman to support it, and I think it would be very well received.
Thank you. So the motion before the chair is to approve a twelve-month trial of food vans. All those in favor? Very unanimously. Thank you. Eleven point seven point five is a revision of council estimates, that we adjust both the income and expenditure estimates.
I'll be a bit fast, Mr. Mayor, we are.
I have got too fast. Thank you. Eleven point seven point four is that council adopts a policy for the flying of flags.
I'm with that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll take, I'll take Alderman Kennedy for second, so I'll take Alderman Von Wurth, Alderman Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, the genesis of this policy came about through my suggested addition to Alderman Warren's motion on notice to fly the Aboriginal flag on a permanent basis at the last council meeting, the second of November. It's pretty self-explanatory. It actually looks at the what, when, and how flags are flown, and the conclusion to the officer's report says council does not currently have a policy that identifies the basis upon which council flies official flags. The proposed flying of flags policy has been developed to provide guidance as to which flags will be flown at the Clarence City Council chambers and office building, and gives guidance with respect to the protocols to be observed. We have been flying various flags on an informal basis or an informal protocol basis, but this actually formalizes the flying of flags. I recommend this to the Alderman.
Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing further I'd like to say on flags at all. Thank you.
Alderman Warren, now he should give you the next opportunity.
Look, I'd just like to thank the officers for putting this together so quickly, because it's only three weeks since we voted on this and agreed to fly the flag permanently outside the Clarence Council chambers. And it was, it was a moment of, it was a really important moment, just a week ago, on Monday, the sixteenth, when the mayor and Alderman Kennedy and Alderman Piers and I joined a couple of the staff, including the general manager, outside. And what made that day really special was that we were joined by Alan Brown, whose father, Cyril, raised the flag for the first time in the Clarence municipality, and his son Greg, so we had that sort of continuity. And Alan was, was really, really moved by us flying the flag, and I think that brought home to us just how important it is to be doing that. And I've had so much positive feedback from people in the community, across the broader community, thanking us for doing it. So now we've tied up the loose ends with the policy as well, and as Alderman Kennedy said, I hope we don't have to talk about the flag again, it'll just happen from now.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, look, I had, during the course of the debate at the previous council meeting, I actually supported a policy, and I felt it was necessary to have some procedure in relation to the flying of flags. The only problem I have with the policy is that the identity of this city of Clarence, by the very nature of having its flag on that pole, and being removed when another flag is flown in accordance with this policy. So in other words, the council flag will come down. And okay, it will be perhaps for a temporary period, but at the end of the day, I cannot accept the fact that the words on the back, on that facade of the council chambers, Clarence City Council, sort of is, is the factor that identifies Clarence as a city and not by the very nature of its flag flying on one of those poles. If there had been some means by which the Clarence flag would fly along with those others, then I would have no hesitation in supporting this policy. But the Clarence City flag comes down when another flag is going to be raised in accordance with this particular policy. And I, like many others in the community, identify with a flag. I think that the flag is the sort of, the linchpin in our very close dedication to a particular cause or to an action or to a nation or to a council or to a government or whatever. And by the very nature of the flag, the Clarence flag coming down and not being flown, to me, it means that we don't have that respect or integrity that the flag casts to members of the community and to other nations and so on. So I'm going to abstain from this for that very reason. I'm happy with the way in which this policy has been put together, and I supported it in my opening comments when the matter was first brought to council's attention. And I said, we need to have a policy. But if we're going to have our flag removed, and the very essence of not having our identity recognized out there, to me, I believe it's one of the pitfalls in this particular policy, and unfortunately, I will not support.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Moller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, protocols, policies, procedures for the flying of the flag. The only real issue that I have with this one, and I sort of share Alderman James's concern about the council flag being taken down when the flag of another nation or another flag is being raised, and that is actually just a question of how many flag poles have we got. And I think that could be quite easily solved by putting up another couple of flag poles, with, you know, so that on one side we have, you know, the, some flags, and then we have a spot where we can fly the Clarence Council flag in perpetuity. But the issue is, is that, but I'll just go to this question about the identity of Clarence. I mean, Clarence actually is not a place. It's, you know, it has no, it's not a locality, it's not an approved locality, it hasn't got a postcode, it's just a conglomeration of the eastern shore. It's actually named, the title was named after Duke of Clarence, which is a title awarded to very, very minor royals in days when monarchs had very large families. So, you know, what is this identity of Clarence? And I think it actually raises the subject about, you know, we need to sort of get an identifiable thing, because very few of us identify as coming from Clarence, except when we're talking about our job as councillors. I mean, we come from Howard, Lindisfarne, Belle Reve, none of us come from Clarence. So, you know, I just take up that identity. So flag being what it is, and I notice that it's, that the flag has the official logo, and I'm not too sure that a castle is an appropriate logo that I identify with as the place, which is the seat of local government. But anyway, I think all the problems would be concerned if we just had another flag on there.
Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I am delighted to stand to support the policy before us, the motion for us with the policy of applying the flags here at Clarence City Council. Of course, with regards to protocol one, we have to look at the Prime Minister, Cabinet Page, state protocol here will certainly give us some advice there, and this policy correctly identifies how we respect the flag to be flown outside the chambers here. Mr. Mayor, as colleagues know, I've been disappointed with this whole debate, I've seen it as very unnecessarily divisive, a divisive debate, Mr. Mayor, a one that should have been and could have quite easily have been avoided. However, it is pleasing, Mr. Mayor, to note that the Aboriginal flag will now quite appropriately fly permanently outside our chambers. Mr. Mayor, I was going to raise this, or ask you this question during the more formal questions without notice here, but as Alderman Warren touched on it, it's something that concerned me at the time when I saw it on Facebook, Mr. Mayor, that was last Monday, the raising of the flag outside chambers here, where, as I, as we heard earlier tonight, Alderman Warren, yourself, Alderman Kennedy, and Alderman Piers, along with the general manager and staff, as well as the Aboriginal elders, and yet, Mr. Mayor, I don't recall receiving invitation. I just ask you, Mr. Mayor, did other Aldermen receive invitation, or is this an ad hoc situation where certain Aldermen were on the fly invited to attend what I see as a momentous occasion for this city?
Thanks, Alderman Moller. You might recall during the debate at over two council meetings in regard to the flag, I actually raised the idea of whether we should have a ceremony, and there was no appetite in this council for a ceremony of any sort. No invitations were issued for last Monday. It was a matter of people knew the flag was going to be raised on an ongoing basis at the start of business hours, and four of us turned up for that, but there was no invitation as such.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll talk to you offline about that because I find that extraordinarily disappointing. And the way it was advertised on Facebook by some here just feeds into what I see as unnecessarily divisive and really detracts, in my view, from what ought to have been a fantastic celebration. But I'll leave it there for now. We'll have a chat offline.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, in your defence, I mean, I was coming at eight thirty in Gardens. I knew the flags would be raised at eight thirty and I was coming. Simple as that. There was no invite, there was no special attention paid to anybody. I thought it would be nice, I thought it would be nice if the flag, the Aboriginal flag was flown, which I supported all along, and I just wanted to be here on that occasion. I could have got here, I would have been the only Alderman here, along with yourself, Mayor. I didn't know who else was coming. So I will say that, you know, if other Aldermen seen foresight, wanted to be here, I'm sure they would have known the flags would go up at eight thirty and they could have easily have got me. But anyway, just one other thing, when we're talking about the flag of Clarence, and I take on Alderman Moore has said there's no place as such as Clarence. When I first got on council, and it's probably only Alderman James that may remember this, I did think we should have a place called Clarence. And I was looking at areas around the central business district that we should name Clarence like you. I think we should have an area called Clarence as we're from Clarence. So I thought you'd like that bit of useless information.
Any other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think how you may feel towards a flag is an opportunity to reflect about how other people might feel about other flags. And that is an opportunity for all of us. I thank the officers for their expeditious work and their judicious work in getting this policy together so soon after the last meeting. And it is something that I will be supporting when we get to the end of this debate. In relation to extra flagpoles, I'm not particularly excited in a period of financial constraint. Looking towards more. I would reflect, though, that people that may particularly prize the Clarence flag, there's an opportunity to look towards the other side of the river about how they treated their flag. They had a Meryl vehicle, your worship, that actually had a small flagpole, so the flag of that municipality could be flown as they drove around. And should anyone around this table wish to stand on that platform for a Meryl TV race, I wish them well.
Any other speakers? Alderman Edmund?
Yes, just very, very briefly. Yeah, good work pulling together this policy. Obviously, it's very prescriptive, but I would say no more prescriptive than the original motion itself. With regards to ceremony, yes, I did consider getting off my bus and coming over and getting back on, but I thought considering a lot of the topics of conversation throughout the debate, that the ceremony itself was, yes, it sounds like it was a lovely occasion, but it wasn't necessarily fan-fitted. I would just make a point, and I can't remember where I saw it, I've been flicking through documents tonight. We have all our official comms, obviously, including like reports, et cetera. It might be worth getting the comms team to just go through and check there's no images where we just have three.
Sorry, where we have what?
Three flags up.
Okay.
I've definitely seen one in the last 24 hours, I just can't remember where. So in terms of our...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, it's the annual plan.
Okay, point made.
Fantastic. Well, beyond that as well, it would just be worth something keeping on to be quite embarrassing if we add and I stand the track and we're still running pictures of the flag, which is easy to do in a comms space.
Might pick up on that annual plan before we publish it, following tonight's approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other discussion? Put the motion in that we adopt the policy. All those in favour?
Sir Roger Rippon?
Sorry?
Yes, Sir Roger Rippon. No, thank you. I don't need a Roger Rippon.
Alderman Von Berto, thank you very much for leading me off the hook. Thank you, Alderman Blomby.
You know your flag lies on, Mr. Mayor.
So the motion is that we adopt the policy. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Now we move on to the revision, sorry, 11.7.5, revision of council estimates that we adjust both incoming expenditure estimates equally. If I can move in a second, please. Do you have a second there? Alderman Blomby, thank you. Alderman Newington?
Um, do you remember the mail?
No, will you move the officers?
Oh, okay. All right, well, look, no. Look, I, you know, obviously we went into the budget deliberations expecting having a few unknowns. We weren't aware of the, you know, a lot of the good development applications, business activities and a whole range of other council services that we thought may have impacted by this whole situation. Now that we've had a few months under our belt in testimony, we've been lucky enough to have most things continue without too many major disruptions for the three months when some of us were shut down, but some of us were confined to quarters for a little while. But I think we've seen that, you know, certainly from a building application standpoint and some of the development work and some of the actual, you know, well, I think we talked tonight about some of the work that we've got in line in terms of our capital expenditure items and some of our, you know, sport and recreation projects that are sitting there, we're just not going to get some of these things done. I think we also are faced with a situation where, from a financial perspective, and the acting GM will certainly be appreciative of this, that there's, you know, with some of the people struggling a little bit to get their rates paid, some of the other fees and charges, we just don't have the staff at the moment to chase up some of the things that we need to do in that space and negotiate and work out a payment plan with some people and some residents, which I think is important as well. So we need that, but having those staff in place is going to generate the extra revenue. And I certainly think from a building and development perspective, the same thing will happen there. You know, some of the compliance things that we need in relation to the public health issues in terms of, you know, inspections on food premises and those sort of things, it's important that we can keep those going and some of the fees and charges will help to offset those sort of things as well. And I think that, you know, it would be, you know, I think with the people in the room here, some of the staff, I mean, I know that they work very hard to get things done. And I'm sure the teams underneath them also struggle with some of the timelines and deadlines and some of the compliance that they have to do and some of the basic tasks that we need to run an organisation like Clarence City Council. So, you know, to leave them sitting with, you know, being understaffed at the moment would be certainly something that, you know, isn't, you know, an effective workplace health and safety practice. And I think that that's a major part of the consideration. But being a service organisation, you know, providing the services to our community, being able to recover the fees and charges associated with that, also being able to look after our staff and make sure that we can, you know, have them in a happy and a safe work environment are all critical things that we as Aldermen, you know, obviously play an important role in making sure that those occur. So, you know, we just simply wouldn't be able to do that without looking at some of the staffing changes. And now that we've seen that, you know, the demand for these services has increased rather than declined in the last few months, you know, it's time that we looked at that. And I think that the sensible approach where we can look at some of the offsets with some of the increased fees and charges that are coming in and a couple of minor changes to our budget, we've been able to achieve that, you know, quite satisfactorily with a couple of minor tweaks, which I think, you know, are probably valid as well. But, you know, now things do, I think we should also be looking at some of the other changes that are recommended in this report in terms of reducing, you know, I think, you know, expecting our planning staff to get up at any moment of the day to go and answer someone at the front desk, to deal with a planning assessment, I think is unreasonable on them because we all know what it's like when you get interrupted all day, you don't get a lot done. So I think we certainly need to look at some of those sorts of issues to make it easier with their set times for people to come in and see a planner. But I think that's unreasonable. And some of the other things I think are worth looking at down the track. But I certainly think, you know, I mean, the alternative to this is certainly not acceptable. We can't just let it continue as it is. And I think this will, you know, but I mean, it doesn't let us off the hook. You know, we still need to look at the budget next year and make sure that these things are sustainable and that the demand is there. And it will mean that we do need to look at some of the other things that, you know, I'd consider non-essential services of council and focus on more of the essential things. But I think, you know, the things that we've got in here, you know, 90% of it is stuff that is pretty well identified as being needed to be addressed, you know, straight away. So I encourage my Alderman to support this process and allow our staff to get on with doing the wonderful work that they do on a regular basis. Thank you.
Alderman Blomby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is my second stint on council. Collectively, I've been here for just over a decade now. Since I was first elected in 2000, I've been saying I've been constantly and consistently impressed with the high level of customer service that our staff are able to do with the resources that they have at their disposal. We run a lean, lean fighting strength. This is a well-run, frugal organisation compared to any other, anyone else, any other of the 28 local government areas in this state. We have a great deal to empower, Mr. Mayor. We also have, Mr. Mayor, as I say, a clear, lucrative responsibility to ensure that our staff are not put at risk, that their health is not put at risk. So we have to ensure we have a tight level of customer service for our residents and ratepayers. We also have to be fair to our staff. We have to ensure that they have the resources at their disposal, that they are able to do their jobs and not put their health and their welfare in risk. And as we're advised, Mr. Mayor, in our report, the Work Health and Safety Act of 2012 clearly sets out our statutory duties and responsibilities to maintain a work environment without risk to health and safety of our employees. There's no ifs or buts. It's quite clear. Tonight, we all heralded these planning decisions, a 98-odd subdivision, fantastic, great, should be more of it. And there will be more of it, Mr. Mayor. And that's why we have to ensure we have appropriate staffing levels to ensure that we have not only the high levels of customer service, but also the work, health and safety of our employees up front of mind. Because that's our responsibility as directors of this organisation. Mr. Mayor, we're also advised here too that the increase for these positions, part of the increase required or the funds required will be funded through increased revenue. It's pretty clear, it's pretty basic, it's pretty sensible, it's pretty obvious, I would have thought. This is a very sensible approach. It was workshop in some detail last week, and I am, for one, very comfortable. And I think we all ought to, without any equivocation whatsoever, support this motion before us this evening.
Thank you. Other speaker? Alderman Walker?
Yes. Look, I agree with about 90%, budgetarily, about 95% of what the mover and settler said on this motion. But I won't be supporting it. I'm foreshadowing the alternative that I've circulated, which includes each and every fundamental core staff that is requested. The positions that are required around the planning offices are eminently necessary, eminently defendable, and I don't want to get in the way of that, which is why I've foreshadowed an alternative. I don't want to delay them, which is what it would have been if we just said, can we hold this off for a couple of meetings to sort some other things out? But what the alternative that I foreshadowed, Mr. Mayor, is around the fact that in this includes a 0.5 City Heart project officer. And I've been saying that basically that's the one position that we should not support tonight. That should be held off and we should be looking at what savings can be identified to offset it. I've worked in different public sector entities in three jurisdictions. And one of the nauseating things I found was that the mentality that you had to spend every cent in your budget before the end of the financial year or there was going to be big trouble, really drove to some unnecessary spending. You'd be asking for equipment, you wouldn't get it, then all of a sudden, two days on June 28th, you'd be told, quick, what equipment do you, if you want to get, let's get it now. If any area has a budget under spend in this, the most challenging financial year we probably face in World War Two, good on them. I don't believe in taking money from them, but if there's under spends, that's a good thing and we're going to need them because there's a whole lot of other spends that have crept up upon us since we went through that budgeting process. And it's important to note that in an era of, you know, the highest unemployment rate that this state's going to face for a little while, 500,000 represents about a 1% weight on the budget. Now, we can talk about offsets and these other things, but all that I have the alternative is just in the most modest of sense that we hold off that City Heart officer and we just look for some new savings that could possibly, potentially be identified as an offset. It's all good to say it's been budgeted, but that's still money that could be spent somewhere else or so. And again, part of what's driving this for me is, as I mentioned, in relation to the quarterly report, that, whilst I agree, the core of this council, the fundamentals around engineering, around safety, around planning, we rap and we perform really well compared to other councils, but we've decided to venture into other areas, as I mentioned. We're now the gurus of health apparently according to a Facebook page. These endeavors are not, they're not core business. And again, you can use that shibboleth of, you know, advancing your community needs to do whatever, you know, to justify anything. But this has got to stop. And the budgeting process was hard and every bit of savings was a difficult and challenging thing. And sometimes when I raise these matters, I feel like I made sense in just shaking my fist at the clouds. I'm going to telegraph that by supporting the alternative motion that I foreshadowing that we need to identify some savings. We can go ahead with the City Heart project, but let's look for some savings to that project officer. Every other one we should kick and pass through, and that's what the alternative motion will deliver.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to draw council's attention to the decision that it made at the 29th of June 2020, when it said, and I quote, "Employees' costs have been contained with the estimates reflecting no increase in full-time equivalents in the 2021 and a 0% increase in remuneration for all employers. Elected members have also minimised their discretionary expenses within the budget." It's important to note that the contribution to the budget made by employees and Alderman. We made a pact at the time when we said that there was going to be zero increase, that we were going through a very troublesome time in relation to COVID-19, and we wanted to tighten the budget. We needed to make sure that we delivered for the ratepayers of Clarence affordable means by which they could have some relief from rates and other hardship cases. Now we are looking at, in this particular motion, to change that, to actually spend 500-odd thousand for the creation of planners, finance officers, a stormwater engineer, a compliance officer, a strategic policy officer and a City Heart project officer, all to the tune of nearly $500,000. And in that paper that we discussed the other night at the workshop, which I thought, and I did raise with you, Mr. Mayor, that I thought these figures should be itemised and put on the public record because that is what it ought to be. That what we have here is in this framework, in this revision of the council estimates, is a fact that there's an amount of 500-odd thousand, and this money has been found through an increase of fees and charges from the impact of COVID-19. So as a result of COVID-19, by doing a lot of these hard yards, by making sure that we looked after the ratepayers of Clarence, we are now saying those fees and charges that we have reaped have now going to go towards a creation of new positions within the city. And I think that the ratepayers of Clarence would be aghast of this sort of process when we stood here and made it quite clear that we were going to make sure that the residents and ratepayers of Clarence would not be unduly affected. Now, what is interesting in this paper, which hasn't been included within the documentation, and it says, and I quote, "In this regard, the rule of thumb, 50,000 is equivalent to 0.1% of rates. 500,000 in new positions will immediately add 1% to the rates increase for the financial year 2021. As well as the new positions, it's noted that council will negotiate two enterprise agreements in 2021, which will also impact upon the budget outcome. In summary, with new positions and anticipated EA increases, we may be looking at..." Now, this is the interesting bit. "We may be looking at starting the..." we may be looking at starting the budget discussion. That's for twenty, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, with an approximate three percent rates increase on the table. Unquote. That is from the document that was circulated last Monday at the workshop, which I made a comment that these figures ought to be enclosed or included within the revision of the estimates so that the public can have an understanding and have the knowledge of what five hundred thousand will do and basically have a one percent increase on the rates for the twenty-one, twenty-two. How can we possibly, Mr. Mayor, have monies that came from COVID nineteen, increase in revenue, be set aside or applied to new positions when we made a decision quite categorically that there would be no positions, there would be no increase in full-time equivalents? And we want, and most of these positions here are full-time equivalents? And that we would maintain a zero percent increase in remuneration for all employees? Now, we all went without, even the elected representatives around here made concessions because that was what we thought was appropriate at the time. And here we are now, dealing with a change in the revision of the estimates. What, and I would have thought that would have taken a, some revocation in some sense because it's cuts completely across what we had decided back on the twenty-ninth of June, twenty twenty. I will not support this. I believe the public have not been informed of the detail and I believe this is incorrect.
Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't anxious to have done this, but I, I just wanted to, um, have the opportunity to correct the record. I thank Alderman James for putting his comments on the record. But when he raised these at the workshop and again at briefing on Friday, I understand that our chief financial officer there has a different impression. And I wouldn't like people watching this meeting on the live stream to be under the impression that their rates are going to go up three percent next year. And I wonder if it's possible through you, Mayor, to ask our chief financial officer to explain a little bit more about how, um, it is not a direct increase because there's also a gain in revenue and an increase in the rate space.
Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Warren, for the opportunity. I think you actually expressed it perfectly in, in that, um, when it comes to developing the estimates for twenty, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, can't believe I'm saying those years, um, all of that needs to be taken into consideration. Now, one of those things that you mentioned, of course, was the increase in the rate space. Now, that's, um, what we call growth. Now, I'm looking at the quarterly report that's just been approved here tonight. And I'm looking at the statistics, um, provided in the city future section. And that's talking about, um, a significant increase, um, in subdivision approvals, which we've already talked about, and also building applications. And you can actually see, um, a comparison to, you know, the months in the prior year as to the increase. Tonight, we've also, uh, talked about a ninety-eight lot subdivision, um, being approved tonight. So there's considerable growth in, uh, in the city. And that needs to take, be taken into consideration in terms of distribution of, um, the rates across, um, the, the city. Also, um, we have, you know, we'll be having an increase in, um, in income. And also in this report that, um, we're talking tonight, um, those costs are actually offset by the revenue associated with those particular positions. So it's perhaps a little bit, uh, misleading to, to imply um, that there is a direct one percent or three percent increase. That is something that we really need to, uh, be mindful that, um, that is projecting into the future that we can't, can't yet see or determine. Um, so I'd like to sort of assure, um, the community that all of those things are taken into consideration, um, the revenue side as well as the expenditure side. Thank you.
Any other comments, speakers? Yes, Alderman Edmonds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I should reiterate some of the comments earlier about how non-fund the budget process, uh, was for everyone around this table and indeed, uh, people gathering at the computer monitor from the executive team. Uh, in that process, we scraped off a lot of articles and we left a few. Um, some really meritorious programs were deferred or assessed. Workers' pay was frozen and I noticed ours was not. Um, we all like to do a hob dance, uh, in the latest race years where I praise the efforts of our workforce and how hard they work. We bring motions to this chamber and the effect of that is extra work for people. We have live YouTube meetings with two extra staff who are giving out their Monday nights to ensure that our residents are kept in the loop of what's been happening. It hasn't been a big six months. Um, so, you know, I can't really let this opportunity pass without talking about pay. Uh, Alderman and we all got emails, as I said, we do. Um, and the workforce and the union were told there's no money in this budget to appropriately remunerate our staff. Yet here we are spending essentially the same dollar figure that was presented to us. And we might say that, uh, you know, we've got an improved budget position, we've got improved revenues. Well, is it under that circumstances are we going to start the EBA negotiations now? I'll put money on whether we're not. So let's just think about that. Um, pandemic or not, staff have poor health, health outcomes and leave their jobs when they're overworked. They also leave when they're underpaid or feel under valued. When we get to the next EBA, eh, how can workforce or indeed the Alderman believe anything we're told? I support the positions that have been proposed to us tonight. I'm concerned about actually some of the stuff that Alderman James raised around, uh, uh, just things we all agreed to in, uh, what, May, June? And then, and we've made it to, what, November? Uh, however, the case, I believe, has been made around why some of those are acceptable. I do agree with Alderman Walker about the, um, point five part-time city heart position. I'll be more than happy to second that alternative motion. Because I think that the case needs to be further made on that front. Thank you.
Okay. Other speakers? Alderman Warren.
I thi- I think we really understand that an increase in receipts is not an increase in fees or rates. So if you're getting more money in, it doesn't mean it. There's another issue too, is that I don't recall any discussion that said that the rates fro- freeze, which wasn't actually what happened. It just meant that the rates in the dollar was being maintained at its current rate for this financial year. There was no suggestion that I overrecall that that would be in perpetuity, that we wouldn't in future years need to do some catching up. And indeed, we probably will need to do some catching up because we can't trade when we're insolvent. We can't be out there spending money when we're not making the receipts. That's not the way local government ought to be working. Um, and if we do go down that particular path, we would just have to look across the river and, uh, and, and, and see, uh, you know, the millions of dollars in debt they are and how they really struggled, some of these councils during the COVID period, when, when there was expectations that receipts would be down because they had to serve as a debt. So you, this is the issue that you run. So, um, to our credit, we actually managed to get out a press release saying we were going to balance the budget this year and we were going to do something unique. Well, it might, uh, I, I wait with bated breath to see the press release saying, whoops, we didn't quite get that one right, but maybe we will. But anyway, um, the other thing is, is that, um, you know, in four short months, we will be back into the budget recycle and we will be having a look at the forward estimates going on throughout the year. I think it's a little bit premature to be now picking off this one or that one. And I, um, you know, and I, and I disagree with Alderman Walker in terms of, um, the city heart being something that can do. Um, some of the other projects that have been referred to and alluded to, these are things that we can have a look at when we're going through the budget workshops and the budget sessions. And I can just, and I, I will simply sum up, I'll say, you know, and in terms of those particular programs, can I just remind you that one Alderman stunt might be another Alderman's core business.
Any others? Someone in place?
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, I want to just remind everyone that we were fortunate enough not to have to let any staff go in this very unfortunate times where some people, I know some friends have actually lost their jobs. And we were fortunate enough not to, not to have to do that. Thankfully because of staff and Alderman and, and things. But we do see that our staff are struggling through lack of numbers and that, that's why I totally support the opportunity to do something. And especially in the planning area, in the engineering area, I like to see that with all the developments going again, they really need some support. Like Alderman Walker, I think City Heart can wait for at least six months because I agree, there may be other budget savings coming along in that area. Uh, what is, and I took reference to Alderman too, getting into a lot of health issues where I'm worried I don't have what qualifications to the staff part of it going along. But I consider some are, are dangerous, I really do. I, I think they're dangerous for us to be getting into. I really start to worry about, uh, that area. Uh, some of the other things, look, I will admit that I think our staff are tremendous and I think they've done a wonderful, wonderful job in times of absolute hardship. But I think, uh, Alderman Walker is on the right track here. One of the things I did notice with the mayor the other day, I said, we're doing all these master plans and everything. But by the time we get to them or by the time we've got money to spend on them, they're going to be outdated. So I really think that we've just got to take a good hard look at that because every master plan we do does cost money. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alex. So, Henry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't really going to speak to this, um, but listening to colleagues here tonight, um, the, the couple of points I've just made, engineering planning critical. Um, I'm supportive of pretty much everything before us. Um, and the feedback I get constantly is around delays in planning. And when I defend that, it's because I understand it. It's a, it's a resource issue, I understand that. But my, my concern, and I had this last week at our workshop, was the City Heart project officer. Um, I know this is a, a big picture project that we've all been thinking about, but I just think this is one area that we can put on hold for the moment. Supportive of everything else and I support Alderman Walker's alternative motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as the Alderman who moved the motion during budget deliberations to actually focus on core services and our, um, core, um, duties, um, you know, it's certainly something that, that's dear to my heart to, you know, look at that from a council perspective. And I certainly agree with, um, Alderman Walker and Alderman Peers in relation to some of the other areas that we seem to be dabbling in that we need to look at. And I certainly, uh, hope that we, we look further at some of those things when it comes closer to budget time. Um, adopting, and the other, at the end of the day too, we make decisions all the time. And I mean, to suggest that once we make a decision on a particular island and we can't go back and revisit it, I mean, that's just absurd. I mean, for Alderman James to think that, you know, much be saying we can't have more staff and we can never do it, well, that's just ridiculous. Um, you know, I mean, the situation is, you know, I mean, it was a good decision back then to, to freeze pay um, and to look at no other positions. And it's a good decision now to increase the staff numbers to allow us to deliver our services that we need to the community. Um, you know, that, that's an important thing for a board to be able to do, which is, which is our role to, um, to be able to move and, and adjust and, and make changes to, um, to policy and, and financial situations as need be. And I certainly think we all agree that that, that needs to be looked at. Um, you know, I mean, even though, um, you know, some of these, uh, jobs, I think it's pretty clear that we, we need some of them. I mean, I, I'll address the specifics of the City Heart deal. I mean, while it may not be a, a, a core service or an essential thing to deal with in the next few months, I think it's something that we're going to have to tackle. I mean, we've got the, uh, the golf club issue coming up in a few months' time. And I think having something in there to at least address that, uh, you know, is important. I think, you know, and then we do have to deal with the, uh, what we do with that space and how we tie the CBD together and how we tie Kangaroo Bay together. And, and I think it needs to be looked at. I mean, but I, I think certainly, even if we pass this motion, we have the opportunity to, to discuss this further when it gets closer to, um, to those sort of situations and maybe, um, defer it slightly or change it or do whatever. But I mean, it doesn't lock us in to necessarily funding that for perpetuity. But, um, I certainly can see some of the concerns there. Um, you know, I, I think, um, you know, we certainly need to deal with giving the, the, uh, the senior managers some certainty in relation to what they're able to do and to start some planning. I mean, because the process to actually recruit staff, train them, get them in and, uh, get them on board is, you know, a two or three month process. So, um, to leave it any longer, I think we'd be doing a disservice to, to everyone. Um, and I mean, the bottom line is we've had unprecedented growth and it looks like that's going to continue for, for the foreseeable future with or without COVID. Um, and I think we need to, uh, be setting up ready for that. So I encourage my Alderman to support this one. I mean, the concerns that they may have about the City Heart project officer, um, I think we can deal with that one in other ways. But if, if the majority knocks this back and, and supports that, I, I won't die on a ditch if that's the way that we go as well. But I think that, you know, moving forward with this, we still have the opportunity to maybe address that as part of, um, you know, discussions in the future. Thank you.
So the motion for chair is the office's recommendation. All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. Um, moving on to item twelve, Alderman's question time. Um, questions on notice. There was one from Alderman Warren, um, which I think, uh, the answer's there. Is it? Thank you.
Alderman Warren's question, um, on notice. Um, the answer to the question is as follows. The following is a summary of the status of the above projects. Greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan. This project takes the form of an energy savings action plan. The focus is on saving energy and greenhouse gas emissions in seven council buildings in accordance with reports from energy audits of the buildings. The energy savings action plan is at the manager review stage and will be presented to council soon. Coastal policy. The coastal hazards policy has been drafted following extensive consultation with both external consultants and internal staff. The policy was presented to council at the workshop in early October. A detailed communication strategy has been developed for consideration by council. The climate change adaption project. A national and international specialist climate change consultant was engaged in December two thousand and nineteen. The first draft report titled Clarence City Council's Plan for Adapting to Climate Change has been received. Incorporating staff consultation, the report identifies priority, priority climate risks and provides a proposed action plan based on a risk management approach. A systematic and ongoing risk management approach is recommended. It is intended that the draft plan will be presented to council in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. Climate change policy. The foundation feature of a climate change policy is to establish the carbon budget and targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions for council and the municipality. With the help of specialist consultants, a proposal for this has been drafted and is at the manager approval stage. The two-page draft document, Setting a Carbon Target for Clarence, Foundation for a Climate Change Policy, will be ready to present to council as stage one of a climate change policy when all relevant reviews have been completed.
Thank you. That'll be in the minutes. Um, twelve point two, uh, there's no action there. Twelve point three, answers to questions, uh, previously taken on notice at the last council meeting will, uh, include in the agenda, will take them as read. Twelve point four, questions without notice. Can I start with Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my first question relates to the state government budget and city deal. Apart from East Doran Highway, do the forward estimates give any indication of any action on council's road priorities, including the morning to roundabout, Richmond bypass, Good Hill Road ramps, et cetera, et cetera? Or are they off the agenda for the next four years?
We'll take that on notice. And I, I haven't got the answer to at my fingertips. But for example, the airport roundabout is one case in point where there's funds.
I was talking about the road priorities that we actually moved as a council to put on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. But we'll get a detailed answer.
Flagged this issue to you at the last council meeting. We'll be out here and said you would take it another time. This is the other time. Mr. Mayor, my other question, um, in the, uh, in the mainstream and in social media, there's been several references to a premier's local government advisory council. What are its functions? Who appoints its members? And are you aware of any advice that is given to the premier?
Well, we actually have a member of the premier's local government council around the table. Uh, Alderman Blomley, would you like to address that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we'll take a minute as we get back to the Alderman. I mean, it's, uh, I'm there by virtue of a member of Local Government Association to smote the general management committee. The functions of the premier's local government council are available on the website for anyone to, to look. And I'd suggest that you'll, good Alderman might like to advantage himself of that opportunity. And I'd suggest that you'll look, could Alderman might like to advise himself of that opportunity?
And I think communica is issued at the end, but essentially it's a relationship between the government and Elgat. Alderman Kempsey?
Thank you so much, you. Sorry. To Mr. Graham, through you, Mr. Mayor. Has council commenced any studies into the effects of building development on existing properties in areas with high risk of inundation at Seven Mile Beach? I know I've touched on this before, but have we actually commenced any work in this space?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we haven't undertaken any work on that aspect.
Okay, my second question is, when do we plan to?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not too sure that I've got instructions from council to follow through with that, but maybe first of all, I will prepare a memo in terms of what might be required in order to undertake that so I can seek further direction from council.
Perhaps a memo could cover what's authorized and budgeted for already and what's outstanding?
Yep.
And what we would need to consider in the context of next budget. Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know a couple of months ago, we did a workshop and we had a presentation in relation to our media and branding and emails and websites and all those social media accounts. And I note that not much is happening in that space up until now. I'm just wondering whether we get an update on how we're going down that path because I still see everything that was in place a few months ago still basically going out as is.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Alderman Newington, if I could take that on notice?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'll take that to the relevant officer for a response.
Thank you. And my second question is, I noticed that there's a mob, sorry, an organisation looking at having a farmers market down at, they're originally at Belreve Boardwalk and now they're talking about Kangaroo Bay. I noticed on their Facebook page the other day that they said they're still having delays in relation to being able to start that up. I just wanted to know if that is actually being caused by council or any issues in relation to us being able to issue appropriate permits or, you all clear to go ahead with it all?
Mr. Tui, are you able to help with that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, a development application has been lodged in respect to a market down near the Kangaroo Bay area. That had received three representations and so that'll be going to next council meeting. The reason why a development application is put in is because it seems a good opportunity to be able to develop that as a permanent option to activate the area and also be able to respond to potential business needs. In terms of the applicant for that, it is council. Another person has approached us in regard to having a Twilight Market there and they plan to go ahead with it in, I think at the twelfth of December, Saturday, the twelfth of December. And that can be, that doesn't require a permit because it's only a temporary arrangement. That person initially inquired about a Twilight Market at Belreve, Belreve, just Boardwalk. However, because it works, wasn't able to be proceeded with. There is already a permanent development permit that allows that to happen. However, the Boardwalk works might be completed until about early or to mid-March. So we're offering that potential Kangaroo Bay site as a temporary solution. However, next council meeting, there'll be an application before council to consider that Kangaroo Bay area for a permanent arrangement for Twilight Markets.
Alderman Edmonds?
Thank you, I've two. My first question is, how significant and extensive are the Aboriginal heritage issues at the Winshunham development and works worth parking Belreve? And can you identify what they are?
Mr. Lovell, are you able to advise on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not aware of any issues at the moment, but we can make some inquiries and advise in a memo.
Okay.
Second one. Council owns and leases out homes on Cambridge Road to private tenants. Are these leases likely to be rolled over into two thousand and twenty-one? Or if they become vacant, will new tenants be sought?
Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take that one on notice and advise Alderman.
Alderman Walker?
Thank you, your worship. This one goes through again to Mr. Graham. Sometime back ago, I made some questions in relation to the coastline track between Seven Mile Beach and Rogers Beach in relation to the narrowness and whether it was safe for utilization for both mountain bikers and walkers given some of the area. We get lots of stuff through our eboxes and if I've somehow overlooked that, my apologies. But if not, can you give me an update on clarification on whether the state of the track is safe for these two activities to cohabitate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this was answered in terms of it was safe at the time. We certainly did during the COVID shutdown periods get excessive use or high use of our tracks and trails. I understand there's no plans to further upgrade that track at the moment, but I will still further follow up and advise Alderman in relation to this track.
Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, last Tuesday, the nineteenth, the Lindisfarne Activity Centre held in the meeting. I wasn't able to make that, I had another engagement unfortunately, but Mr. Graham and other council consultant and officers attended. And on behalf of the communities, I want to thank, through you, Mr. Graham and his team for attending that meeting. And there is a question, and that is that the issues discussed, is Mr. Graham able, through you, Mr. Mayor, to provide indication as to whether the committee might give back to council offices to take the matters discussed to the next stage?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Council has adopted in the current capital works, capital or annual operating plan, investigation of upgrading the outside of Lindisfarne Activity Centre. Draft plans were presented to the committee last week. We've asked for feedback by mid-January so that we can plan this to be put as part of the council consideration for the next financial plan.
Alderman Peers? Oh, sorry, Alderman, my second question?
No, maybe it's not too, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I refer to the document that was circulated earlier in the survey with regards to the petition breakdown by area. For those that signed the Kangaroo Bay hotel site petition, there was tabled here with much fanfare and great flourish. Mr. Mayor, as someone who has initiated and partnered community-led petitions in the past, namely Lindisfarne and Belreve pedestrian safety, my question or my concern arises as to the way that the petitions are tabled because there was, as we all recall, Mr. Mayor, great reference to two thousand shot of nine signatories, et cetera. And, you know, that was something that I got a lot of through social media and other channels.
Question?
An analysis, Mr. Mayor, of the breakdown of this indicates that twenty percent of the signatories are actually out of the area. From areas like Woodbridge, Youngtown, Bishamoe.
So we're doing it in fact on a question?
My question, well, that's just to illustrate a point in this study. So my question is, my question is, is there a system, I've actually looked at our policy here and obviously that's in line with state legislation, to actually, rather than just having petitions forcedly on us, and I read on all of them, but on that particular instance, I asked our book at a petition, is there a way, now this sort of breakdown, when the petition is first tabled, so we don't then have to take it face value that there are two thousand two hundred people in our city of Simon's that signed the petition, when in fact, it was only seventy-nine percent?
Alderman Blomley, I think it's a reasonable question to ask and we'll take it on notice. We'll look at whether or not we can take that into account each time we receive a petition where there's some sort of breakdown accordingly. I think as a matter of principle, that's something we can look at.
Well, just on that, Mr. Mayor, looking at the policy, there's a requirement that Alderman, within seven days of receiving a petition, are required to bring it to general manager's attention. But there's no window of opportunity, so that can be done the night of a council meeting. That's my issue.
But we don't consider, you know, it might be tabled at the council meeting, but it can't be considered until it's been through the mill.
Appreciate all of that.
Thank Alderman Blomley.
It's just abused by many people, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
We will look at adopting, not adopting, we will look at how that might be done so that we get some sort of feedback. Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just want to quote, I was told on Saturday night that the air conditioning unit at the current Creditco social facility does not comply. Can someone tell me if that is true?
Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly have to take that one on notice.
Thank you.
Apparently it doesn't comply, I was told, so.
You've got a second question?
Your second question, Mayor, and I just want a very short answer. The road we changed through, we were dealing with our insurers on a payout, has that been resolved as yet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, it hasn't been resolved yet.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Yes, the Alderman, very brief. Firstly, we've all received a text message with the lovely floor on Fawn and Bloom on Rosney Hill. And so my question through you to Mr., that probably left you out.
I didn't get, I.
To Mr. Lovell, my question through you to Mr. Lovell. At what stage, Mr. Lovell, are we up in relation to the appeal on the Rosney Hill hotel pod and restaurant development, please?
Let him answer. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe the appeal is set for three days in the week before Christmas.
Sorry, what was that?
I believe the appeal is set for three days in the week before Christmas.
Thank you very much. Second question is to you, Mayor. Mayor, can you advise council of the valuer general's valuation and the independent valuer Knight Frank's valuation of the proposed hotel hospitality site at Kangaroo Bay?
No, I can't. Because I don't, I understand the information will be available for our workshop on the seventh of December. If it comes sooner, then I'm sure we'll circulate to the Alderman sooner.
At that time.
But to my knowledge, we haven't got the commercial one yet.
Thank you very much. Oh, we do have the government one doing.
Well, I think the general manager mentioned that at the workshop the other night.
But he didn't give any specifics. Wouldn't the acting general manager be able to advise of the government valuation on the site at Kangaroo Bay, please?
Have you got it to hand?
No, I don't, sorry.
Okay. It'll be circulated when we get the valuation, certainly. Alderman Warren?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Can I then thank the public for lasting the distance, those that have? We do need to close the open session of council at this point in time. Thank you. That is no benefit.